Thursday, April 18th, meeting of the Quincy Council Education Committee to Order. And I'm going to go ahead and read into the meeting, the open meeting law. So pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendants are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. But you're all being taped, so don't worry about it. The matter before us this evening is Order Number 2019-065, Resolve Literacy. It's Financial Literacy Month 2019, and we're going to talk tonight about student loan debt. It was introduced by Brad Crowell and myself. And what we really are hoping to do, last year, we did, in Financial Literacy Month, we did social security. So this year, everybody, it's in the news everywhere. Colleges are getting more and more expensive. It's getting harder for people that graduate to be able to buy houses, and it's getting harder for families to retire. So we really want to hear from the following speakers to talk about that and to talk about options for families and to have a discussion about that. So the first speaker we're going to talk to tonight is going to be brought to the microphone is George Blount. He's the Managing Partner and Head of Behavioral Economics at New Balance Financial. So welcome, George.
And I can just forward with this control. Correct. All right. Great. Thanks. All right. Well, thank you guys for having me, and good evening. Let me just introduce myself one more time. My name is George Blount. I'm the Managing Partner at New Balance Financial. By practice, I'm a financial therapist, and I also conduct research in behavioral economics on an academic side. Today, we want to talk about Financial Literacy Month, and I have found in the area of behavioral economics, it's good to level set. So if you would give me a chance, I want to just give you a little bit of background on how we came to having a Financial Literacy Month and kind of what that extension means for some of the efforts we have in financial literacy today. So it started in 2003 as simply Financial Youth Literacy Month, and in 2004, the Senate changed it to actually become a fully functioning Financial Literacy Month going forward. It was actually during the Financial Literacy Month of 2006 that a group called the Financial Literacy Education Commission was formed, and that group is known as FLEC, and I'll talk a little bit more about them today. But one of the things that FLEC, or this Financial Literacy Education Commission, put forward for all financial literacy was a framework and a standard that all parties and all stakeholders can align to when it comes to financial education, research, grant writing, and anything of the sort that related to financial education. However, right after 2008, and then our subsequent Dodd-Frank Act in 2010, it necessitated a change in our national strategy to deal with some other issues that we found pressing in 2010. And so from that time, the national strategy has been created. Every other year, with the last one happening, 2016 was more of a revision of the overall national financial literacy strategy. And in 2018, they focused somewhat on mortgages just because of underlying crisis of a topic that they chose today. So that's where we're at today. I think it's an interesting backdrop because it gives us a good indication of how much information we truly know about financial education and this gap that exists between what we actually do about it. And so with the time that I have today, I'd like to share with you what I think is the origin of some of the student loan debt, how we can correct that issue, but also give you an indication of exactly how much information we have at our disposal, which we can use So in terms of what we know, it's multi-layered and multifaceted. I think I would start with just letting you know what we do at a federal level. So at a federal level, as I mentioned, we have the Financial Literacy Education Commission. It's comprised of the 23 federal agencies that actually involve financial behavior in some way, form, or fashion, and it's chaired by the Treasury Secretary. During Financial Literacy Month in 2016, they came up with what we know as our national financial literacy strategy, but it's basically a way that allows us to outline the exact steps that every person needs to take, so that way we can ensure we have consistent data and to ensure that we also have consistent outcomes that we can report back to in the We also know that from an academic standpoint, if we were to look at the academic articles that have been written since 2015 simply in financial education, there's almost 1 million articles that have been written under that topic. And through this platform of FLEC that actually allows us to align the consistency of the research, as well as some of our other platforms like Google Scholar, which is able to create an accessible database, we know that there is some commonality in some of the research that we've seen today. Specifically, some of the common themes are that with financial education, we should start as early as possible, that the workplace is an ideal venue to actually incorporate financial capability and financial wellness assistance, that there is a need for financial education that is nuanced, to understand the complexity of present-day financial decisions, as well as the lasting impact throughout your life of those decisions. And then lastly, that in order to solve the problem, it will take the collaboration of not only nonprofits, public and private, and governmental entities, but also our ability to understand the frameworks that are already in place and create the type of consistency that allows us to continue to move forward. And so I'd also like to point out that there's over 4.5 million articles that have been written throughout our entire time in financial education. And so when we look at 2015 for there to only be a million, there's plenty of data that we still have yet to sift through. And then I'd like to move now to what we're doing in Massachusetts. And here in Massachusetts, in 2015, we were really fortunate. We had our Treasurer Deborah Goldberg incorporate a Financial Literacy Task Force, which actually consisted of members of private organizations, as well as colleges, universities, educators from our K-12 organization, as well as Deputy Treasury and other members in the Office of Economic Empowerment. And one of the things that we were able to do was put forward at the end of 2015, in November, December of that year, was a comprehensive financial report that details the impact of financial education throughout the entire state and actually segments those findings into K-12, college/university, and the adult section. The good news is that as that Financial Task Force concluded in 2015, they left with 22 recommendations from the members of that committee to the state where they can actually incorporate these to move us further ahead in the financial education fight. And I'm happy to say that as of today, we've completed 86% of those recommendations, or 19 out of the 22 have been met as of today, or as of 2018. And so what I'd end with is that we know that from a federal standpoint, we have this framework to align the various stakeholders, and from our academic standpoint, we have a prescription and scale so that we can actually transfer this information out into the ecosystem to try to help it out. And then we know from our Massachusetts work that we have tactical data that we're able to incorporate to move us forward. And then I kind of have to pause there because that's usually where the conversation stops, right? That's what we know, and that's all the information that we have. But I'd like to talk a little bit about kind of what we do and the gap that exists between what we know and what we do, and some of the things that we were able to find out on that Financial Literacy Task Force. And so I say "we" because I had the pleasure of serving on that task force. And kind of during that time, I had the opportunity to chair the Adult Subcommittee. And one of the things that I was charged with was understanding the flow of information. So as the K-12 Subcommittee and as the College and University Subcommittee came to a head, how do we roll out an information into what we knew in the Adult Subcommittee, and how do we take that information and see the impacts from their early adulthood into their retirement years? And so there were a couple of points that I'd like to highlight from the report that were fairly significant, that we have a really great opportunity to actually attack this issue in the K-12 environment. The framework and the way that we can actually influence the curriculum offers a great opportunity to be able to do so. Very specifically, we really should do work with juniors, seniors, or those that are in high school that are in the process of transitioning to college. It's at that point that the decision-making starts, where a strategy is necessary to take on the financing, and at points, this is a step that's just simply not occurring. But I also would like to say that it was at this point that we saw one of the more interesting examples, and so I'll use that to really give you an understanding of how we can fully realize the gap that we went through. And I'll use the example of a high school junior or senior and kind of how we originate student debt, so that way we can talk about how we correct this situation. So for a case study, if we look at the student debt timeline, ideally, we know that there are no real requirements throughout the United States for financial education within K-12, whether that be a personal finance course or whether it is an economics course. This is something that is very troubling when it comes to the space that we operate in. I would, sorry to say that Massachusetts is in the line with a lot of other people, right? At a bare minimum, Massachusetts, like others, recommends that a personal finance topic be included inside of the curriculum. But Massachusetts, like other states, simply do the bare minimum. There are no standards that are required by the districts to be implemented. So even though it's recommended, the districts still get to determine whether or not they are actually implemented. Is there a high school course required to be offered all throughout Massachusetts? No, right? So even though it can be recommended, there's no requirement that it's offered inside of high school. It's not required to be offered or taken. And then in addition to that, we understand that there's a difference between the personal finance and economic areas, and so there is not a requirement to have a separation out between personal finance topics or economic topics. And we should not be surprised, Massachusetts is not alone. There are only 17 states throughout all of the United States that require some type of personal finance class in their curriculums. There are only 22 kind of states that require high school classes to include some type of economic class inside of their curriculums. I think one of the easiest ways to actually address this, and one of the ways that we discussed throughout the committee or throughout the task force, was to simply incorporate personal finance and economic coursework into the standardized testing because it already exists. And that in and of itself would create a great opportunity for us to educate high schools, juniors, and seniors and others as they're preparing to study for the tests that they are taking today. What we find instead is that a high school junior or senior, when they don't have this information, whether it's personal finance or economic information, it's their junior year where they're first asked to make a decision about financing their college education, and that's through the FAFSA application process. Normally, that would be required inside of your junior year, but most people delay, so it happens your senior year. And as a result of that, most people are making decisions under duress, which are normally not the best decisions for them. We have seen that the majority of people that drop out of school do so within the first year, and the majority of people that drop out of school within the first year have not completed courses that are general college education-required courses that are easily transferable to an associate degree program or to a bachelor's degree program. At that point, they simply just start to accumulate debt into their freshman year, into their sophomore year, but now we start to also add in the extra accumulation of debt and credit card debt. So now, as we've entered into college without having that financial understanding or economic understanding of the loan that you took out, we've also compounded that issue by including credit card debt, and it continues to accumulate. One of the issues that we saw is that as you continue to do this, as a person graduates, it influences their decision-making as they come out of college. So as we go into young adulthood, what we see is that individuals whose skill sets are very much proficient and prudent to seek out entry-level opportunities are not seeking out opportunities based on their entry-level skill set, but their accumulated debt position. And as a result, we have more college graduates that are underemployed or unemployed as a result of seeking out the ability to pay, to receive a higher income in order to repay the debt, repay their debt. And it's at this point that I'd like to just talk a little bit about ways that people are actually looking to solve some of the student debt once it has accumulated, is that the young adults are missing out on an opportunity within mid- and large-size companies, which have now started to develop tons of employee benefits around repaying student loans, some that actually tie directly into government programs that are income-based repayment, which are called IBRs, or PAYE programs. There are public service loan forgiveness. If you were to work in nonprofit or in the public sector, there are some ways that you can forgive some of your debt, as well as legislation that's moving forward to actually make this a little bit easier with one hope, hopefully being to refinance some of these student loans at one part. But all of this is simply not occurring because we have individuals that fail to actually seek out the proper entry-level jobs that are willing to work with college graduates with debt because they're seeking out instead higher-paying jobs to pay this debt, and they often will do so by going into a field or a discipline that they did not experience or did not have the education or experience in college, or they have a rapid turnover which prevents them from actually finding good tenured jobs in the end. So with that, I think it's an important way to minimize this gap by talking about some of the alternate pathways that individuals can go through as they look to pay their college education or finance their education going forward. As you mentioned, most people are dropping out after their first year or second year without actually fulfilling their general education requirements, but you can do that at colleges and universities throughout the state, especially here in Massachusetts. Across the street at Quincy College, you can do that as well. One of the things that it allows you to do is you can also start this process earlier. The summer before your senior year and the summer after your senior year, you can go and take these classes so that it prevents you from actually financing that first part of your college year. So we can do a lot with general education. As we mentioned, starting early is extremely important, and in most cases, we see decisions being made under duress because we wait until the last minute to actually have the conversation about college, the strategy in financing it, and the strategies of kind of what you should do if you don't get into your school of choice. If we simply move those conversations up earlier to sophomore at a bare minimum, but at least by their junior year, we can at least ensure that we have decisions that are being made at acceptable times and acceptable environments that take away the duress that they may experience. We should also encourage people to seek out employment opportunities within the college and university system so that it allows another way for them to receive an employee benefit, which may be education, but it also allows them to actually work and develop some of the skills that they will need for their actual ongoing jobs after they get out of college. And to that point, if you start early and you start to develop a strategy, you have the ability to take advantage of co-op programs and internship programs, which ensure that you're able to get an entry-level job at a medium or large-size company that's able to take care of some of the employee benefits that they have today. And so in conclusion, I think I'd like to first thank you for your time, but to say that because it is the National Financial Literacy Month, and because we do have so much information, and there is such a wide gap between what we do and what we know, if we were to do anything, now would be the time to do it. This is the month. Every month is busy. Every day is busy, but we specifically designated this month as Financial Literacy Month to put forward the activities and the advocacy to ensure that if we have viable solutions to the problems, we're able to articulate that and put those out into the ecosystem to hope for a solution in the future. So with that, I will turn it back over to the Chair and answer any questions that anyone has about the content delivered today.
So I'd like that to open it up. Does anybody have any questions? Counsel Harris?
Thank you, Chairman. George, thank you for coming this evening. This was very, you know, having had two kids go to college. One finished, one didn't, but they're doing good. But what, this information wasn't, we really didn't look for it, and this is great stuff coming at us, being available to the public, and just taking the time to come out and setting up this. This is fantastic. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you. And I'd also say it wasn't available for a lot of us, and I think one of the things that we have to realize is that we're in the middle of a paradigm shift. The way in which we think of financing education, what the value of that education is, and how we go about fulfilling the dreams of pursuing that education have drastically changed over the past 10 to 15 years, and it is not uncommon for there not to be someone that has come forward to say, "Well, now the norms have changed, and this is what we should do," and even though you did those things in the past. So we're in an interesting time where we have to take these opportunities to actually provide the type of information that even though we may not have seen it when we were younger, if we can pass it on to somebody else, it helps out. And fortunately, that's the way that we can do this, slow and steady, the same way we got into the problem. But I think by focusing on maybe stopping some of the waterfall coming down, if we can at least stop the flow of people that are walking into this student debt crisis, it will give us enough time to actually alleviate some of the burdens of the people that are dealing with it. So maybe this is the prescription to kind of give us some preventive care along the way, so that way we can deal with the actual crisis and deal with the ramifications as we get to that point later on.
Thank you. Thank you again.
No problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any questions? Counsel Crowell?
Thank you, Chairwoman Mahoney. You know, a couple rounds. George, obviously appreciate your presence here this evening. You're obviously a student of, you know, what, you know, the industry. I want to also thank Counselor, Chairwoman Mahoney for, you know, leading the charge, and also Quincy Access Television. And I say, you know, a huge shout-out to Quincy Access Television, and I'm going to thank Michael when he comes up too, but for allowing us the option and opportunity to disseminate information to the at-home viewer. I'm thrilled to see some folks joining us here in the chamber this evening. And, you know, a couple of things come to mind as I sort of walk through your presentation with you. I think, A, it's really positive that we're creating an environment to talk through, you know, the issue. B, I think, you know, obviously, an hour is not enough to provide a, you know, silver bullet solution to the issue. But it's amazing to me, and I'm going to ask you a question in a moment, how far-reaching this particular issue is, and in my opinion, is almost, you know, suffocating the generation, you know, of the future. And I say that in a sense of, you know, some of the topics that you covered here this evening, maybe not having as much information upfront, you know, to make the best decision possible with the end in mind, but also, that would be for the student, but also for the, you know, for the parent who's involved in the decision-making process. And, you know, what I've kind of engaged in various conversations, you know, throughout, you know, my constituency, parents who are forced to make financial decisions based on, you know, their child's student loan debt obligations, which could include things such as refinancing a mortgage or delaying retirement, you know, contributing to a retirement plan. It's just much more than the actual cost of education. I feel like the side effects are, you know, that reverberates throughout the economy, and, you know, it's just good to be able to kind of get the information out there. I mean, in your travels, and I know you do a lot of these sort of talks and speaking engagements, do you find that there's a lot of this going on throughout, like, government agencies such as local city councils throughout Massachusetts? Are you seeing a lot of this?
Yeah. I would, so I would say Massachusetts is doing a tremendous amount of work to at least create the platforms for advocacy for education, not only financial education, childhood literacy, making sure that we do as much as we can to limit student debt, as much as we can do in terms of education, so that way we're able to better position ourselves in terms of income equality. And so there's a couple of different places where you can go into when you talk about financial education and downstream impacts. The one common thread that I would share with you is that we think of financial education as being something that can be taught and something that is disciplined in the framework. But when you do not have the financial education within the public schools, and that problem has existed for so long, you have to then shift your mind to say that financial education isn't something that can be taught, it's more of an experience, right? That we learn how we make our financial decisions and what we know about product based on what we use and how we use it and what we've gone through. And so to that point, when it comes to financial education in 2019, in terms of looking at financial education as a module to be taught, we should look at it in more of a transactional model, where we have to create guidance and advice at very specific periods of time when you're more inclined to make a bad decision, like when you're in high school preparing for college, like when you're about to graduate from college and take on your first job, or when you take on your first job and you're trying to figure out your budgeting. Having a very transactional and very specific intervention at these points can significantly enhance a lot of the work that we're doing in financial education overall. And Massachusetts is a great place that has done a lot of good research and has a lot of good data elements on the use of this transactional method of financial education. And so it's something that I would say we do extremely well. And even applying some of these takeaways as we did today, simply having conversations, if we were to go back to like that timeframe, if you could simply have a conversation in high school and make sure that you can follow up with that conversation in terms of college, that information is extremely helpful, and that's been something that has been extremely well-received at forums like this, both in Massachusetts and nationally.
And I would also say, and I guess I would defer to, you know, folks that had served on the school committee, but I believe the city of Quincy actually has some sort of curriculum that we drive within the school system, you know, to get to folks early on in the decision-making process. And I remember when I was at that sort of transitional point, you know, contemplating higher education, and the decision didn't become real until it was, I think you'd use the word "duress," right? It was a high-pressure situation. And, you know, for me, and I'll kind of tie it in when President Biladi talks, having the opportunity and option to, at the time, access the resources of Quincy College allowed me to basically somewhat finance my whole college experience by, you know, completing a lot of those general ed/education curriculum requirements at a lower cost, you know, than you, if you will. But...
Yeah, I would say it's probably a perfect transition because the way that we solve this problem is not by not encouraging people to go to college, right? It's by encouraging them to go to college, but to think about how you finance it in a different way. And so I think Quincy College does a great job of actually allowing the students of our Commonwealth to have alternatives to the four-year institutions and maybe get some of these college requirements, get some of the skills, as we discussed, have the experience, and actually come to the understanding of what you want to do in your adulthood. And so those types of programs have the ability to offer themselves as tremendous anchors to success for those individuals that choose to use them because of what we see around financial decisions that are made under duress that bog down as they continue over time. So I think the words and kind of the way in which you set it up is a great way to think of how we can solve this problem, especially in, like you said, the limited time that we have to try to do something within this month, within this session, to try to give people some great ideas and action steps forward.
And I mean, one other thing, I guess, before you pass the time, that I didn't realize that I learned tonight, and I think it's important to reiterate it, and you can correct me if I'm not, you know, articulating it in the way that it is, but you can be in high school in the summer of your not only senior year, but your junior year, you can be fulfilling general education requirements.
Yeah, at the conclusion of your junior year, like, as you begin, it's the summer of your senior year.
Going into your senior year.
Going into your senior year, you can go to these community colleges and take general education requirements. They're essentially college prep classes that you're paying for throughout the summer. If you were to take two of those throughout the summer before your senior year and two of them throughout the summer after your senior year, you may almost have saved yourself a full semester in financing at a four-year college, and you probably did it at a fraction of the course.
And that's over, I don't know how long the longevity of a student loan is, but that's probably 10, 15, 20 years.
Correct.
Of paying interest on something.
And you probably did it at a fraction of the course.
I don't know how long the longevity of a student loan is, but that's probably 10, 15, 20 years
Correct.
of paying interest on something that you were able to accomplish upfront while you were still in high school.
While you're still in high school, and I think we also have to acknowledge that if we don't change it.
That's pretty powerful.
Well, I think it's also pretty powerful that if you don't change it and if you don't realize that this problem is getting a little bit worse every time, you can essentially have parents paying off student debt at the same time that their kids are taking it on. And so we're talking about households and a generational component that can be absorbed by student debt at the exact same time if we don't find ways to stop the faucet from running. So I think it is imperative to talk about these ways because if we don't really start to stymie it, we can really end up in a generational problem when it comes to student debt where we could absolutely change it by just having a little bit of intervention earlier on.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Counselor Debona.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for putting this meeting on. I think this is very important to be speaking about and it's why I came tonight. I think this is phenomenal that we're actually in the chambers and the QA TV is on. You know, George, when you were talking, you struck some points here. You kind of went through, when you were talking about how, you know, some students are going to school and they're only going to school for a year or two. And then basically they might have already taken some student loans and now they're out into the real world. They're 19 and 20 years old and have some debt already occurred. And they might want to take a different job that they might not particularly want to take. When you spoke about that, I thought, started to think about the effect it will have on somebody's credit if they aren't able to pay back the loan or the monthly amount. And what it does, it goes on that credit report. And then on that credit report, it can affect you up to six to seven years of time for buying cars, houses, and just applying for credit cards and things like that. So right out of the gate, you may be in trouble if you don't continue to go to school. Because I think under the Stafford, I mean, the subsidized loans, as long as you stay in school, they'll pay your interest. And then once you complete or graduate after that six months, then it starts.
Correct.
You start to pay your monthly occurrence. I looked up a little bit of stuff online and I couldn't believe the amount, the numbers that I got. It said that 2.5 million student loan borrowers are more than $100,000.
Yep.
I couldn't, I couldn't believe that number. And then 610,000 have more than 200,000 in a student loan. I mean, that's coming out of the gate, graduating and having that much debt already on them. But they said the average was between 10,000 and 25,000. And that was like 12.27. So these numbers, it almost seems like what student, unless you're getting a full 100% scholarship, probably has to somehow pay this or have a student loan. When you talked a little bit about being in high school and you said that 22 out of the 50 states talk, actually educate you in high school about economics.
Economics.
Economics and money, I guess I could say. Are you seeing here in Massachusetts that our guidance counselors and people that are, you know, you know, giving advice to students, are they talking about the student loans? Are they giving them, you know, a little crash course? Or are there any classes that someone can take before they go to college and if that's for them? You also talked a little bit about going to either a two year or going to get an associate's degree at a local, you know, college or a community college and then transferring down the road and getting some credits. You also struck a chord when you talked about core classes. Especially if you don't stay at that college and you want to transfer those credits. It's important that you talked about the core classes. Those are the most transferable to other universities or other colleges. Whereas if you went into a field like business and then you transferred and you didn't, you didn't take up business, those classes kind of, they're tough to convert. Do you, do you give people and students advice beforehand and how do you educate them?
Yes, when we talked about some of the requirements, some of the recommendations that were made by the Financial Literacy Task Force and 19 of the 22 have been implemented since 2015 in their report card in 2018. Three of the overarching requirements were to actually try to do as much as we can with existing legislation that actually dealt with financial education, advocacy and awareness. So that was the very first issue that moved forward and they were able to address that fairly quickly. Second thing was to make sure that there is a focus in the K through 12 system, in whatever environment. So if that's the guidance counselors, but that there are, if not guidance counselors, programs, career fairs that actually deal with some of the other issues that relate to financing your education and what you should do once you get into the workforce. I think the third point that I would mention was the overarching recommendation that I think is extremely powerful and especially in some of the topics that you brought up is that we have to actually have a way to bring the families together, especially when we look at multicultural and multi-generational families, to talk about the strategies involved and the downstream impacts of these strategies. When we talk about the impacts of credit or the impacts of trying to pay a job in some households, that is a household decision and a generational decision. And so it's not acceptable for that to be had without some type of, without some type of thought or without some type of background. So spending extra time to make sure that you have conversations with parents and children to understand not only the ramifications of the child's financial decisions and what that does to their future, but then also the parents and kind of what that does to their future as they want to support their child or as they're trying to invest in their child for their future education. I think we have a lot of the areas already set up where we can do some work and it's just a matter of making sure we do it a little bit more broadly. As you mentioned, the best time to have conversations about your credit, about some of the downstream impacts is before you actually start to take on the debt. And so as it's not happening, that doesn't mean that we still don't have opportunities later on. And so we have to continue this throughout K through 12 as well as when you get into the college university. And then especially so once you get into the adulthood space. But I would say this, the one thing that you mentioned is that the economics and personal finance courses, we still have to do a lot of work on what exactly that means in today's society. And so I don't want to make it appear as if the states are not actually working as hard as they can. We've had zero kind of new states added on for these since 2016. Part of that really has to do with how do you create a framework in a curriculum where we're dealing with forms of kind of banking systems and alternative financial services, which may be different than what we're comfortable teaching with. We didn't have GoFundMes and Bitcoins and blockchain. At the time, we were thinking of money markets and checking and savings accounts. So the type of curriculum that you actually have to put in place for personal finance and economics has drastically changed as well. So we're doing work, but we're also dealing with changing paradigms while the work is still trying to get done. And I think that's what you're going to start to see in terms of, we have to take an opportunity to have these conversations, but along the way, some of it may be delayed because there's a nuance that we haven't really figured out yet that will still take some time for us to figure out.
Do you think a public school system could require a class that you'd have to take to graduate? Do you think we could get to that point?
Yeah, I think at a bare minimum, right? You can get to a point where you have this class is necessary, like a necessary life skills class to graduate. But even if you didn't do that, you still have the opportunity to embed this within the standardized testing that already happens today. And in that way, it actually creates a scalable way to ensure that we're passing this personal finance and economic information to a larger group of people by including it in something that's already nationwide and standardized fairly well.
What we do here in the city, and while I was serving with Counselor Mahoney that's chairing here on the school committee, is we emphasized community service where now it's up to every grade has to do, you know, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, amount of community service hours. It would be even, even better to have these classes, but also if you could do something at a bank.
Yep.
You could go into a bank and actually sit down with a rep or a branch manager and go through some of these things and somebody could, could actually educate you on some of these needs. I think that even takes it a step further, but just having this discussion tonight and listening to you, it's kind of got the wheels are starting to spin in the head of how we can help out our children in our schools and what we could do for the future of them. So I really want to thank you for coming in. You got me spinning a little bit with thinking about what we could do as a body here on the council and what we could do to advocate for the school committee and in our children. So thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. And you also made a point that I will kind of use as well. The amount of debt that people are taking on, 100,000, 200,000, average of 20,000. I'm fairly certain that most people don't know what that debt is for, right? In terms of they paid for their college degree and they don't exactly know what type of job that college degree is going to be worth, or they've taken on a certain amount of credit card debt and they're not quite sure what they've taken that debt on for. We can do an awful lot of work and as the wheels are turning, just keep in mind that in the area of behavioral economics, I also would infer that clarity also provides a great opportunity to allow people to make better decisions. And if you understand what you're paying for, what your degree will lead to, what job that degree will lead to, how much income that that job will lead to, that type of strategy allows you to have a very good idea of the type of debt that you're taking on, the amount of income that you will have to pay it off in the approximate amount of time that you will be able to take it off. So simply having key data elements allows you to make better decisions that in and of itself will create a better outcome than if you did not have any information to begin with. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to continue the dialogue and I really appreciate the time that you guys have taken today to make this an issue during this month.
Also, Counselor. So I have a few questions. I'd like to make a couple of comments too. So I was on the school committee and the Quincy Public Schools do a great job. They don't have an economics class, but they have business classes that kids can take. And they have a financial literacy forum, Credit for Life. They bring the seniors together and they give them opportunities to kind of pick their roles and they have to stay within their budgets and they're given a salary and how much their take home income is. And they can go around, they can buy a car.
Awesome, awesome thing in Massachusetts. It's a great experience.
It's a really great thing. And what you'll see is a student that's, you know, might be making not a lot of money is actually budgeting much better than the kid that, you know, was handed the great job and thought that that great job with that great salary. Because, you know, when you're 17 or 18 years old and you get told you're going to be making maybe 90 or 100,000 dollars a year, you're like, wow, I'm on the lottery. And then within seconds, it's gone. And that's the reality, right? That's the reality that they're going into. So it's a great experience for them to do that. The other thing that Quincy Public Schools, and I'm just going to tuck their horn a little bit, but the families that are at home that maybe don't go to the public schools, they have the options to also go to, the guidance counselors hold college prepared nights where you can come and you can learn about FAFSA, you can learn about what, where you can apply for grants, even scholarships. A lot of times what people don't put into their budget is that a lot of scholarships kids can go for and that can offset a little bit of the money, if not books or something for the first year. Then there's revolving scholarships you can come back to. And, you know, there's many other things too, but really one of the things you touched upon and, you know, making those choices of how you're going to save is when you have that baby, one of the greatest things you can do is when family members give you money is rather than put that money into an account or buy toys or other things for them is to put it right into their college savings. It does add up. You'd be surprised how fast it does. It kills you when you go to spend it though, because when you put your kid in college, what you find out is you're going to get taxed on it. And you've got to spread that out over the time because then you find out your kid who is in college is now having to pay a tax return on the money that you so desperately saved for them to put them in school. They don't tell you that. But the FAFSA portion is very important and you can do that early. And the thing is, is that a lot of kids don't know what they want to do. If you say to a 15 or 16 year old, what do you want to do for college? They, they're like, I don't know, I was thinking about going to see the new Dumbo movie. Like they're not thinking about college. And for the very few of them that have the 20 year plan, and God love them, they do have the plan and they know exactly where they want to go, their families then have to figure out whether or not they can go there. Because what you can do with the FAFSA, and it's a real eye opener, when I did it myself, you, when you apply for your FAFSA and you're thinking, you know, I saved all this money. I did all the right things. I didn't paint my house and I didn't, I don't drive a fancy car and I'm living within my means and I really, and they tell you, you can afford this much money to send your child to school extra and above what you've already done. And you're thinking, where is that money? I wasn't told where I have that money and my husband's still accusing me that I spent that money someplace else. He thinks I have a hidden vacation home someplace and I do not. But the reality of it is, is that's when the real discussions start happening at your kitchen table. Schools can teach them so much, but really families have to have that open dialogue with their students. And it's a hard one when, you know, your dream might be to go to school in New York, but the reality of it is, is you're not 100% sure if that's what you want to work at for the rest of your life. You can still have the dream, but you might want to change the location of where you go to school. And, you know, it happened in my family and my daughter was very nervous about going to New York. She chose to go to school in Boston and she ended up getting a fellowship in New York. So she lived out both of those dreams. She got her degree in what she wanted to go for and she actually went to the school that she passed up because it was way too expensive. She would have been, it would have been $85,000 a year to live in Manhattan, but you know, but still she got to go and do that. She did internships in California and she went to Europe and she did all the greatest things that you could do, everything you want a college student to do. I have another one in college and he's formed his own path. But the reality of it is, is when they get out, the other big conversation you want to have with your children, and if you can, invite them back home. Because as soon as they go out and get that apartment and they have that freedom of living outside the house, they want to stay outside the house, but the reality is those loans are coming back in. And in our house, we did, we did, we'll pay as much as we can. If you go to a really expensive school, maybe that will be one year and you pay three years. If you go to a state school, maybe we'll pay three years, but you're going to have some debt. We're going to give you some debt to carry because it's important for you to realize it's a responsibility. Education is a responsibility and it's something we do for the rest of our lives and we figure things out. The other side of it is for the students that this is the scary thing in this world. And I say it about everything, and I am in marketing, so I can say this, that we live in an on-demand world and we market to that demand. And we're feeding this information to our students and to our families, telling them they can afford whatever they dream. Their kids can have whatever they want and you can go wherever you want. All you have to do is sign on this line, but they don't tell you what you're signing on. And that student that goes to that school rather than going to the state school that they might have been able to go to and afford to go to and goes to their private school, finds out quickly when the, you know, when the loans run out and they didn't qualify for all the other things that their parent has to co-sign for it, but the parent can't co-sign for it because they can't afford it because they didn't have these discussions. That's when they end up not being in school anymore. And that's when the scary part in reality sets in. But it doesn't have to be because there's options like Quincy College that you can go to and you can continue down that path. I have another family experience that my niece, who thought she really wanted to go really far away to school, went really far away to school and only to come to Thanksgiving when she came home, she didn't want to go back to school, but she didn't tell anybody she didn't want to go back to school. She just didn't go back to school. And when our father, when my brother found out, he was pretty upset. But what she did is she worked, she worked for that next year and she figured out what she wanted to do. And I'm going to promote Quincy College right now in their nursing program. Because she went to the nursing program at Quincy College and she got her associates. And then she went on and got her bachelor's at Simmons. She has her master's from Simmons now. And now she's teaching, she's working at Beth Israel as an oncology nurse and she's also teaching. So it's, it can be done. And really it was finding what she wanted to do. And when she went off to college, she didn't know what she wanted to do. So when she took that step back, so it's not always a bad thing when kids decide to take a break from college because they're not ready for it. And a lot of families think that they have to go to college. My kid has to go to college. There are a lot of other opportunities for kids too. In the Quincy Public Schools, we have vocational studies. So, you know, there's trades that they can go into. And trades is a five year program. The apprenticeship programs were a five, it is a college and they graduate with the job. So in the military, there's a lot of kids that go into the military. So there are all of these things, but the hardest part for families is the dialogue and finding that dialogue. I know Quincy Public Schools do it really, really well. But, you know, when a family is struggling and, you know, your student's picking a school because their best friends go into that school and that's not a real, you know, you try to say that's not probably the best decision. You know, you want to go to a school that's going to give you what your dream is, not who you're going to be with. But it's hard to explain that to a 17 or an 18 year old. So the reality of it is we can have all the courses we want, but the conversations have to be, you know, started. And really when you start, the other thing is when you start taking your students to colleges, a bit of advice would be, don't tell them, let them figure it out. Let them go to the colleges and look at the curriculum and all of a sudden they'll say, yeah, I really thought communications, but I was thinking, and you'll see that open up because those avenues might seem really narrow when you're 16 or 17 years old. But if you have a business degree, you can pretty much do a lot with it. If you, if you want to go for whatever it is that you're going for, the opportunities are out there. It's just a matter of trying to find those niches. And internships and additional educational opportunities are always there as well. Credit card debt, I'm just going to tell everybody in the world, read the disclosures. That's where they kill you. You sign that debt, you're going to be paying it for a long time. But it is hard. The best lesson a child can learn is probably the amortization table. See how much money you have today and how much it's going to cost to pay out over the long. long period of time, and try to pay it off fast. I was taught that by my dad, you know, or better yet, by my mother, who used to leave my itemized bill on the refrigerator when I was a kid growing up. If, you know, if you went outside the budget, if you asked for anything on the grocery list that wasn't on her list, you got a bill on the refrigerator. So it's sometimes things that we have to do at home, but the conversations are hard to have. And we're all busy, and we're living this life where we're trying to keep up with things on the last side of everything. And Counsel Kroll touched on this. This is when it can be really, really hard, where you're paying for that education, you're helping your students, you're doing everything you possibly can do for them, and then the federal government's telling you, now you owe me more in your taxes. What you should be doing is, you know, putting more into your retirement fund. And you're thinking, again, you keep telling me I have all this money. But, you know, it's a tricky balance. And I think that, you know, the reality of it is, is the middle class is really getting pinched by this wave that we talk about, the cost, the disparity of the cost. And it's really escalated over the last ten, fifteen years. And just like housing and everything else, it has to slow down and it has to become fair again. Because if we don't, we're going to have a population that's not going to be able to meet the needs of the demands that we have out there. And the haves and the have-nots are going to get further and further apart. And that's what we don't want to see happen. But again, I would leave it with, you know, if you have a student that's not sure, junior colleges are all around us. They return into four-year colleges, but there really is, community colleges are a good asset for them to go to and transfer. Go to a state school if you really were dreaming to go to that private school, transfer. And two years later, I have a lot of friends that did that, too. They were able to say they graduated from the colleges of their dreams, but half the price. So they don't tell you this, but you have to think about it in your own family and have those discussions. And maybe your child might be mad at you. I have a few of them that are mad at me on a regular basis, but then they usually come around and tell me I was right. I'm not looking for them to tell me I was right. I'm just looking for them to realize that the decision is theirs, and they can either pay for a long time or realize that there's other opportunities that they can have. And finances are hard, and that's why we get paid money to do the jobs we do. If we didn't, it would be much easier because we do, but we have to, and God bless you. But, you know, if, work is not free. So I always say, you want to work at something you love and get paid for what you love, and you want to do the same thing with education and further enhance yourself. But be knowledgeable about what you're doing, because it's the first step of being free as well. So, thank you very much. If there's no other questions, I'd like to thank you for coming up and invite our next guest up, which is President Bellotti. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, George. Thank you. Well, I have some good news to start this out. Department of Education recognized through their scorecard methodology that Quincy College has the highest salaries of all community colleges in the state. So we have the top earners. So that's good news in terms of paying our student loan debt. And I think today what we're going to do is talk a little bit about how, you know, what George said, it was interesting listening to all of you, and some of us are older parents and others here in this room. And like Counsel Harvath said, as I listened to George and some of the other issues confronting decision-making around these issues with families, we didn't really look at those dynamics. We just let the thing evolve and develop. How about you, Counsel Mahoney? Knowing you, you will probably do a little more homework on this issue.
Not really.
No pun intended.
Not really.
But folks like me and Billy just kind of wanted to see our kids succeed, and we encouraged them, North Quincy graduates, to do whatever they could to position themselves. And then you didn't want to say no to them, when it was a Mary Mack or a Stone Hill or a St. Ace. And I think what I'm learning now, what I learned through this experience with my oldest child, is those discussions have to happen early so that children, as they matriculate through high school, understand the reality of the issue. Because right now, we're looking at some serious student loan debt as a family and how to handle that. Because I wanted to give, you know, my kids that ideal experience. So it is kind of sobering, and as President of Quincy College, I think, in light of the trends in higher ed, we're learning about lower enrollments, but yet, skyrocketing twitions in the student loan debt burden put on families and students. What we have at Quincy College, as we all know, is an opportunity for any student, because we're primarily an open enrollment school, primarily, to walk in and decide whether they go part-time or full-time, how to begin that journey in education and that lifelong learning at times. And we do this through, a couple of examples. George talked about dual enrollment. We have recently signed a dual enrollment agreement with North Quincy High and Quincy High, so students can take classes, junior and senior year, for only a hundred dollars of credit. It gives them the opportunity to save money when they enter college. It also gives them the opportunity to learn about the great opportunity at Quincy College and get them comfortable with Quincy College. We know, many of us growing up in Quincy in this area, that Quincy College as an institution has evolved in terms of perception. And right now, more and more people are recognizing it's a way to learn about themselves as students and the opportunities. Because we typically have all our credits transferred to four-year institutions when students either complete a year or two years. We know that they're all going to graduate, because they might leave early. They might do a certificate program. We have one of the most successful biotech programs for entry-level jobs into the biotech industry. And I've heard this from folks up and down the biotech industry, whether through the major nonprofits that help out and different companies. We have a great professor named Bruce Van Dyk, who has created a nine-course credit where every student that graduates, ninety-eight percent point five, so just whatever student, will have a job in the biotech industry making around fifty-five thousand dollars upon graduation. That's what a community college does. It creates certificate programs and two-year programs, which are stackable, which is a term in higher ed, where if you graduate or you finish a certificate program, you can go off and work in the job market, in the chosen field, and then continue your higher education degree, many times with the support financially of that employer. Because of the job market, those opportunities exist. It's really upon us at Quincy College to make sure we're working closely with local employers and regional employers to see what those jobs they can't fill and what type of programs. Again, it could be associates, it could be a five-class certificate program, and then to continue with that employer as they continue to train and educate those employees. We have, we're very proud of the support we give the students at Quincy College, so when they walk in into our institution, there are folks like Leanne DeLeo, who I'm going to ask, say a few words today, and I know we're kind of running late, but, because she kind of exemplifies the effort that we put forth. And the talent, we have so much talent with faculty and staff, and they're so committed. And they know that at a community college, just like many other colleges, if you don't create the pathways around the bureaucracy, around financial aid, or whether it's international students, or those other areas that students really need help in terms of working through the maze of how to be successful in college, then you could lose that student forever, ever, either to another institution, or they may never enter another higher institution again, because it's so overwhelming. And that's really our business model. But before, I asked Leanne to say a few words. Again, I want to thank George for reinforcing some of the things in a macro way, and what we're trying to do in a more local way is answer some of those challenges. At Quincy College, we have a default prevention servicer, ECMC. They work with the students immediately, in terms of how to manage that loan and what the expectations are. You know, one out of four Americans have student loan debt. The average student loan is about twenty-nine thousand dollars, and we know it's much higher in many other cases. The average student loan at Quincy College is about thirteen thousand dollars. The default rate is a major concern, because the greater the default rate, notwithstanding the burden if they do pay it on the families, and how it does prolong decisions about when to buy a house, when to start a family. But default rate is really going to be, is going to be the issue that drives if this bubble ever bursts. Is about ten percent at Quincy College. It's declining. We're working hard at it. It's just below the national rate. A majority of the students at Quincy College are on financial aid. We're also very focused on recognizing that over three-quarters of all students in the fastest-growing occupations right now are going to require some type of training or a college degree. And also, fifty percent of those kids or students coming out of a higher-income family hold degrees. Only one out of ten out of lower-income hold degrees. So the point is, it is an economic equalizer, and we're going to need higher ed. And I know there is a lot of perceptions out there that, geez, you know, what good is a liberal arts degree, a criminal justice degree, a poly sci, a philosophy, a psychology, versus more the hard sciences. There are going to be needed in this growing market. And it's coming upon us, not just nationally in terms of dealing with this issue, but also locally through Quincy College, is continue to really work with those families, many lower-income, from the Dorchester, Roxway, Quincy, Waymouth, Randolph, Rantry area, who are just looking for that opportunity to begin to matriculate. And because, as we have alluded to, not all these students come in, really, because of the age, the ignorance on the parents' level, meaning people like me, about, you know, when you pursue financial aid, you really, you usually get somebody who helps you fill out the application. They help you pursue that loan, but they don't really do the broad picture about the consequences of that. That's not really their job, you know, as George is making his job. But other, like those narrowly-defined financial aid folks, they just get you through how to pursue the money and get that money and sign on the dotted line, which is what I did as a parent, too. And more and more, particularly at Quincy College, we want to educate these students. And the best thing that we can do at Quincy College, I think, and I'll just wrap up with this, is transferable credits. So when you graduate or receive X amount of credits, Bridgewater, UMass, BU, NU, recognize those credits and accept those credits. Certificate programs that get you a job almost immediately based on employer needs and industry and business needs in the community. And also, it's to continue to work with that student and those families so they understand, appreciate how much money they're going to owe at the end of the day, and the dual enrollment program. So we're trying to do our part. We're trying to fashion programs that allow students between the ages really eighteen and twenty-five, which is a major, major portion of our students, the average age is about twenty-six at the college, to come into that school and not, as they find their way about, in terms of where they're going to end up in life, and some folks have to support a family immediately, then not going to end up so far financially at risk. And George, I don't know if you talked to this point, but we know that the biggest issue is when folks create debt and they don't graduate. That is the double whammy. They do a couple of years, it's just too much to continue, they have to raise a family, they just can't afford the expense of it, and they don't finish. To a greater, greater percentage, those folks never really got out of debt, and it affects their lives continually versus at least some folks who are overburdened debt, they have a better chance of getting a job and paying that debt off. So that's really all our responsibility, and I appreciate this forum and this opportunity. So Leanne is a financial aid assistant. She lives in Quincy. She's somebody who kind of exemplifies or personifies what we try to do every day, working with these students. We have incredibly talented staff over there. And I just wanted her, because in some ways, this is kind of a commercial for what we do, because what we do on a community college level, particularly at Quincy College, kind of fulfills that niche that helps with this looming, looming financial crisis, which we know is coming in higher ed. And we're just agile enough, and mission has been established over the years in such a way that although high-end trends tell us in about five years, there's just not enough students to keep these schools alive, we're going to be positioned for a lot of reasons. So Leanne, if you can come up, and then I'll answer some questions.
Thank you, President Bellotti. Thank you, counselors, for having us here. I am a financial aid associate, and I have been at Quincy College for three years. I've been in the financial aid industry for fifteen years. So I can tell you, yes, the student loan debt is a big problem out there. One of the reasons I love working at Quincy College is because it is so affordable. It really is. I've worked at other colleges where students walk away with at least forty thousand dollars in student loan debt, you know? So it's not, it's not good to start your life outside of college with that much loan debt. At Quincy College, we are so affordable that, especially if a student does a FAFSA and receives federal or state grants, I mean, essentially, they might not even have to have any student loan debt. They could do a payment plan for a small balance. They could have possibly a federal work-study job to help them cover the cost of their textbooks. They can search for outside scholarship, as Ms. Mahoney said, and if they get a scholarship, that goes a long way at a place like Quincy College. A thousand-dollar scholarship might be a drop in the bucket at a BU or a Suffolk, but at Quincy College, that could cover your books for two years. So, you know, all of those little resources there, we try to get that word out to students early. Just to echo Mr. Blount's message of getting that lesson out there early is, as soon as a student steps foot on campus, somebody from the financial aid department is there, talking to an open house group, talking to a campus tour, talking at orientation about the importance of not borrowing loans if you really don't need to. You know, and while they're here, if they do decide to borrow loans, they have to do something called entrance counseling. It's a federal requirement where they have to complete a tutorial online on a federal website, learning and understanding the importance of borrowing loans, subsidized versus unsubsidized, how to repay, what to do if you cannot repay, because everybody knows that if you go delinquent or in default of a student loan, that will basically ruin your credit for many years in the future. So we also try to kind of echo that from our financial aid department to our students. Once they are ready to graduate, seniors have to do also something called exit counseling. So just like entrance counseling, they have to go on that federal website, and they're actually going to get a monthly loan quote, you know, a loan repayment quote. So the average loan repayment nationally is three-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars a month. At Quincy College, our average monthly repayment for our students is a hundred-and-forty-eight dollars a month if they've borrowed. So that's, you know, it's a good step forward for them. Also, when they're out, after they have left us, we have, as President Bellotti had said, we have a company called ECMC, who is a default loan servicer. So they will help us track our students that are getting close to that sixty-day delinquent mark. Because after two-hundred-and-seventy days of being delinquent on a student loan repayment, a student will enter into default status. And once a student enters into a default status, it can be really catastrophic for them. Their wages can be garnished. So they might be expecting a twelve-hundred-dollar paycheck one, you know, every two weeks, but that the government can actually go in there and garnish those wages to kind of recoup some of those missing loan payments. They can lose their tax refund. So, you know, a parent who is, okay, my kid needs braces, three thousand dollars for that, I'll get a tax refund. Well, if you're in default, that could be garnished as well. So that, you know, it can be catastrophic when a student goes into default. So we make it a point to make sure that we have this third-party servicer that works with our students that are creeping up to that default level. And we have seen a lot of success with that. We went from a fourteen-point-one percent default rate to what's trending towards a ten-point-seven default rate, which is amazing. So, yep, I just, I love working at Quincy College because I think it is so affordable, and, you know, that's the name of the game, saving money and building a great future. Thank you.
So you can see the talent we have here and how closely they are focused on the issues that impact the average community college student. So I guess I'm done. I don't know if you want to comment. Counsel Kroll, thank you very much for the invite. And to the other counselors, thank you for allowing me to speak here today.
Does anybody have any questions for President Bellotti?
I just have maybe a comment or two. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. It's been a reflective meeting for me, anyways, just kind of listening to the presentations and hearing some various life experiences. I'm on the other end of the curve, which is, you know, the biggest thing going on in the Kroll household is, you know, what's the Easter Bunny going to bring on Sunday? the Crowell household is, you know, what's the Easter bunny going to bring on Sunday? But as my wife would tell you if you asked her, you know, how we're going to finance college in 15 years is probably one of the top three priorities in my mind. And, you know, as I had mentioned, Michael and President Bellotti, thank you for being here, and as well as yourself, Leanne. This was, this is good. My own personal story, and I mean this like wholeheartedly, given where I was in my season of life when it came time to make, you know, the decision to go on to higher education, if it wasn't for, if it wasn't for a institution like Quincy College to provide that level of support that ultimately led to a transition mainly through affordable education, I can honestly tell you, I probably wouldn't be sitting here today. And I absolutely mean that. So I see, you know, from my own kitchen table, the value of having, you know, community education that's affordable and accessible. So one thing that kind of stood out to me as well, and I think it's just important to maybe repeat it, the partnership that you have with both Quincy High School and North Quincy High School, I think you said, if you're a student at either one of those high schools, you can essentially pay $100 per credit, and I think going way back in the time machine here, each course is three credits, so 300 bucks.
Right.
$300. And you can take maybe two during the summer of your junior year.
Even senior.
I would, I would love to, just wonder what that would look like at one of those institutions that you would chair, Leanne, like from a cost analysis perspective. It's probably significant.
That's something we can provide the school committee, too, you folks, as we track that.
Significant.
And that was really with the easy working relationship we have with the superintendent.
Yeah.
That was a product of just how, you know, Rick is just somebody you can just kind of knock on the door and hammer it all quick.
He's, no, he's the best. But, you know, my experience at your institution as well is, you know, the professors that are, that are, you know, running the classrooms, I remember quite a few of them, and they're top-notch. So the amount of financial savings that you could potentially realize and the quality of education.
Thank you. Many of them could teach anywhere, but they choose to teach Quincy College because of the community college experience, and they want to be, you know, making a difference in that space, as we say.
And, you know, again, thank you for being here. I hope this was helpful for some folks, particularly, you know, those folks that are here and at home and.
Very helpful.
This is something that, you know, I deal with, and Counsel Mahoney also work in, you know, similar industry. We hear a lot more about this in our day jobs, and I just felt compelled to kind of advance this conversation, particularly during Financial Literacy Month, so I thought it was great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a Counsel Devana minute. So Counsel Devana?
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Bellotti, thank you for coming in tonight and speaking. Thank you for the other guests as well. My story, I came out of high school, I went to a university, I stopped after two years, went into the workforce, and luckily, I went to Quincy College to get back into the groove of things. And after an absence of some years, and it was, if it wasn't for the winter sessions and the summer sessions and the night classes, to get a business administration concentration and management associate's degree from Quincy College, and then going with a nice transfer program to University of Massachusetts, Boston, where I got my four-year degree. But I think back of the time spending at Quincy College and having my former principal at Quincy High, Lloyd Hill, as a professor. He taught business law class, and it was a phenomenal class to get one-on-one with him after all those years. And I know in your, your college right now, you have Bobby Sarasoli, which is a former state representative, IG. And then you also have a former mayor, as in Jim Sheets.
And many, many years.
That still teaches over there and.
An icon over there for decades.
An icon. And to have those two individuals, as well as your other staff and professors over there, is to get a great education through Quincy College. I think back at some of those classes I took and how it's instrumental in what I do today up here. But it, I'm happy to see that you're over there and that the nursing program is coming back and things are going really well, because that is an alma mater of mine. And if it wasn't for those Quincy College classes, I don't know how long it would have took. While I was paying my school loans to go back to these colleges and universities and end up getting it. So, you know, it's good to be here tonight. I thought this was a very important meeting that Madam Chair Mahoney did, and it's good to have you up here, President Bellotti, to, you know, work this together. Because if you succeed at that place, we are going to succeed as well as a city. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Noel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Harris?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Mahoney. And I didn't earlier thank you for putting this together. This was, this was very enjoyable and enlightening and brought back a lot of memories, brings back some memories. Thank you, President Bellotti. Michael, always good to see you. And I just want to mention something that you had mentioned, which is, I think, is very important, especially with Quincy College, and that you mentioned transferable credits. Now, in the Harris household, my daughter started her nursing career, her goal to be a nurse, right out of, right out of high school, went to St. Joseph's College, went there for a semester and a half, which was, probably would have been two people going to Quincy College, the tuition for four years, the cost that was spent. But she went, came back after, not like the Counsel Mahoney mentioned, came back after her second, the second year, first semester, came back and said she didn't want to go back up to Cold Maine for another semester. And she went to a state school, but in between, she went to Quincy College. And she got a few courses under her belt there. She got her bachelor's degree from UMass, and then she wanted to go on and continue to try to be a nurse. She went to some more classes at Quincy College, all transferable. And then she went on to another community college, West Roxbury Community College. And at the young age of 28 years old, she also, I want to mention what George said about employment. Her employer, she went on to be a CNA, and there was reimbursable, reimbursable through her, through the union, through the 1199, to be able to not have the debt that some people, and your point was well-taken, and people really need to think about that. The kids really need to be able to have that thought process. And, but that transferable credits, Quincy College credits were good. They helped make the dream come true. And she actually was the head nurse at BMC, and she was actually bossing my wife around, which, which was.
Can't be good in the household.
Which was quite a thing. She was wound up being the head nurse that day, and my wife was working underneath her. So that is, you know, but she reached her goal and her dream, and.
That's what Quincy College does, you know? It's not always the traditional way to enter or leave, but it puts you in a, in a place where you can really take a deep breath and, and, you know, make some decisions about your life.
Absolutely. And again, thank you, and thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
It was very good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, President Bellotti. So one quick question. I don't know if you have this, and I know North Quincy and Quincy High School do. Do you know how many students from North Quincy and Quincy High School are taking advantage of that?
Do we have that exact number? I'm not sure. I know it's.
You don't have to be exact.
So we have, it's, right now, I can't say. I can give that to you.
That's okay.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, it's, it's the, probably the biggest number at Quincy College.
Yeah.
You know, you're down at Plymouth, it's Plymouth High, a few, Brockton High, but I would say it's the largest category of students, North Quincy and Quincy High. I'm guessing, you know, maybe one out of four, one out of, a little bit higher, but not much, because we get a lot from Dorchester, Roxbury, Randolph, Weymouth, Rantry.
And they take it in the summer, or some of the kids taking it during the year, too, that can qualify?
Well, this is a new program, a dual enrollment program.
Yep.
So they can start this summer.
They can start this summer.
Yeah.
Was there another program that they were doing with Quincy College? Were you doing another program with Quincy College with seniors that might be able to?
At one point we were, but I think we reestablished you in the past couple of months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that is incredibly great, like, great collaboration between, between the Quincy Public Schools and Quincy College, and a really valuable one, that if there are people at home listening to this, that if your students are looking for something to do this summer and it's not working. Going to school might be one of the options that they can do, because it's, it does, it does help in the long run. I mean, it is, for many reasons, it helps in the long run. It definitely helps financially, but it also helps them for the, being prepared to go and make that selection for that college that they're picking. Like I said, a lot of times, students are looking at the school, but they're not looking at the academics that are there. They're getting a feeling as to whether or not this is the right school for them.
Confidence.
Yep, but oftentimes, and it doesn't always come with a price tag right away. I mean, that doesn't come until you do that. But best advice for people is to log onto FAFSA. It's April, you did your taxes, so you can just automatically load them in, and you can find out what your, what your value is. But thank you very, very much for coming. I don't think there's any other questions.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate your opportunity.
It's been very helpful.
Really do.
I'd like to thank Leanne DeLeo for coming as well, and I'm so glad to hear that our Quincy Colleges is helping our students make really fine financial decisions as they come. And thank you as well, George Blount, for coming and giving us the opportunity to learn a little bit more. There's so much information on the internet right now, it can really get people, get you lost on the internet when you're trying to be able to figure that out. But ask questions and don't be shy, is what I always say to my kids. Don't, don't be shy, ask and figure out how much everything costs, but it's, if you do it right, you can, you can make it work. So at this point, I'd like to close the Education Committee meeting. It is 7:50, and this item will remain in the Education Committee. Thank you.